Is this on? Is this on? Hello?
Use your outside voice.
Use your outside voice. Good evening. I would like to call to order the pledge of allegiance. And I would like to ask Select Woman Nancy Lefkowitz to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. So I would like to move to approve the minutes to a date certain to our next meeting, if I may, just to work out some of the issues that were in the minutes, rather than a line-by-line edit, if I may.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. We are going to start with the first, number four on the agenda, to hear and consider and act upon the following reappointments. A, Borough Gardens Advisory Committee, Robert Twardzik. And, Robert, are you here? Hi, Robert.
Hi.
And I think we're going to take these all together, right?
Sure.
Okay. And next is B, Harbor Management Commission, which also requires RTM approval. Kim Taylor. Is Kim here? C, Board of Health, Diana Ava Moritz. She can't attend either. She has, she works 12-hour shifts, so she's not going to be able to be here. And we also have, per our charter, reappointment of our tree warden, Jeffrey Minder, who is here, who does a very good job as our tree warden. And so may I have a motion to approve A through D?
I'll move to approve the reappointments.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, and the motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you for your service to our community.
Congratulations.
Next, we have appointments to hear and consider and act upon the following appointments. A, the Affordable Housing Committee. A is Helene Ann Daly.
It gets better. It's more exciting now.
To fill a vacancy for Saul Bricks, whose term expired. And Helene is here, if you want to raise your hand. Thank you. And we also have Joanne Romano, who is going to be appointed to replace Gerald Stultman, whose term also expired. Joanne, there she is. Hi, Joanne. And Sheila Dravis, who is going to replace Vicki Cooper, whose term also expired, but she said she can't attend because she's picking her daughter up from college. I just want to thank you both for coming to the meeting today and for serving, stepping up to serve our community. The Affordable Housing Committee is a very important committee in our town, and it obviously is an issue that we care deeply about. So I really appreciate you both stepping up to serve the community. And can I have a motion to accept?
I'll motion it.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Dunces, motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The next up is the Park and Recs, Park and Recreation Committee, appointing Caitlin Lee Henry Schmidt to fill the vacancy of my dear friend Alexa Malady, whose term expired. And Caitlin is here. Thank you, Caitlin, for stepping up to serve. I think you're going to have a lot of fun on the Park and Rec Commission. I served on it, and it's a great, it's a great commission to serve on. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to...
I'll second.
...appoint Caitlin.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the next is Board of Health, appointing Sally Conley to fill a vacancy for Thomas Braun, whose term expired in November. And Sally Conley is here. Thank you for attending. And thank you for willing to serve on the Committee, on the Board of Health, because it's an important board to serve on, and I know you have a lot of good experience that you're going to be able to share with the Committee and on behalf of our town. So thank you for your service. Really appreciate that. Can I have a motion to approve Sally?
I'll move to approve Sally Conley.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you. Next up is D, Harbor Management Commission, and this also requires RTM approval, which will be then forwarded over. We have Samuel Cargill, who's going to fill the seat of James Harmon, whose term expired. He is not able to attend because he has something, a conflict. We have Eric Sudman, who is going to fill the seat for Norman Markilis, whose term expired. And is Eric Sudman? Yes. Hi, Eric. Thank you for being here. And we have, let me get back here, Jacob Herschler, who is filling a vacancy for Christopher Jennings. And is Jacob here? Hi, Jacob. Thank you. And we're going to have, as an alternate, Libby Trissler, who is going to fill the vacancy of Jacob Herschler, and who's being considered for a full position. And I don't think Libby's here. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the Harbor Management Commission appointments?
I will move to approve the Harbor Management Commission.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for serving and for your willingness to serve. Next is Human Services Commission, the appointment of Suzanne Testani, who will fill the vacancy of Bruce Carter, whose term expired. And Susan Testani, can you raise your hand? Thank you for being here today, and thank you for your willingness to serve our town.
Thank you.
And we have, let's do the Ethics. Actually, no, that's next. Okay. So let's, motion to approve Susan Testani?
I'll move to...
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for serving. Really appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
So the next one, we're going to, this one only? Yes. We are going to, I'm going to ask that item number F. I'm going to ask for a motion to post, to amend, postpone this item indefinitely. Someone, if they can make a motion for that?
I'll make the motion, but ask that we don't call it for a vote immediately. I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
What's, what's the process here? What are we doing? And what's the goal?
So instead of a date certain, we are doing it in this manner, so that we can do it at any time we'd like. The Ethics Commission currently has now a quorum.
Okay.
Are able to meet, because we appointed Mr. Steve Berger. And so we're going to hold off on this appointment.
Okay. So we're not holding up the commission. They can meet and go about their business at this point. Great. Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Do I have a second for the motion?
We did have the second.
Okay. And can I, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. We are at G. Oh, this one too. I need to make a motion to, to postpone this to, I need a motion to amend, postpone this item indefinitely. G, Fair TV, and it is because the gentleman's changed his party affiliation, and he needs time to be able to, I guess, a certain amount of time.
Got it. I'll make the motion then, I guess.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Aye. The next item is H. It's Land Acquisition Commission. And this, let's see, postpone. I don't have the name of, do we have the...
These two.
Yeah. Thank you.
And then this is...
Alternate.
So I don't know if you have to move.
Yes. So I am making a mo, I need a motion to amend H. And if you want to actually make that amendment, motion to amend it...
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend, what is it, 5H, that Walter Anderson Bickers III, who goes by the name of Trey, is moved, how do we say this, moved to fill a vacancy as an alternate?
Uh huh.
And then add Adam Goodman, Adam Y. Goodman, Democrat, to, for reappointment. Should we do it one by one, or should we do this as a...
Let's do it as a block.
Okay. So Adam Y. Goodman, Democrat, as a reappointment. And Jeff Galdenzi, Democrat, as a reappointment. Is Mike Widmer here? Because he may be able, because I'm fairly certain they're both reappointments and not going from an alternate to a full. But so the motion to reiterate is to move Walter Anderson Bickers III, Republican, at 75 Forest Avenue, to fill a vacancy left as an alternate. And then Adam Goodman and Jeff Galdenzi to serve as full-time commissioners, if that sounds right. Yeah.
I will second that.
Are any of the gentlemen here? Trey, thank you for your willingness to serve and your willingness to be flexible as well. And this is, actually, I just want to just give some historical perspective. This commission was established when I was on my first term on the RTM. And at the time, we were purchasing quite a bit of open space in the town. And Jill Kelly was one of the original members of the Land Acquisition Commission. They meet four times a year now. It's a little, little less busy than it was in 1999. But I appreciate your willingness to serve our community. And I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And the next one is number six, Tax Collector. To consider and approve an abatement of taxes. Do we have to revise this? Do we have to revise this, David? Okay. So to consider and approve an abatement of taxes for the 2017 grand list taxes due July 2018, June 2019, for 21-23 and 63-65 Darrell Drive, in the total amount of $8,903.12. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And this, I'm sorry. So what we're doing here is the original, the original wording was incorrect. So this is a motion to amend to what you just wrote.
Correct.
It was an amount that was...
Yeah, the amount was wrong.
Yep.
Yep. I'll second it. Yes.
Do you want to have him present?
Yes. Go ahead and present the item, and then...
Sure. So these are two rental units on Darrell Drive. They're subject to a declaration of restrictive covenants in order to preserve the units as affordable housing. And my duty in all of this essentially is, I'm, as tax collector, the one that's authorized to request the abatement. And per Mark Barnhart, I did confirm with him that the agreement dates back to 1995. There is no expiration of this agreement. As long as they're in compliance, then the tax collector, historically, always, on a year-to-year basis, abates the taxes once we pass the time period that the taxes cover. So this is just catching up and abating last year's taxes, because they were in compliance and still are in compliance.
Has the town attorney reviewed the document that was signed? In other words, how long, this has to go on. I read the document, and I'm a layperson, not an attorney, and it seems, as you said, it's in perpetuity, that every year, they get an abatement on these taxes on an ongoing basis.
Correct. As long as they're in compliance, and they still own the property, the taxes get abated each year. Unfortunately, because there's no, you know, there's no expiration, it's not abated for a time period of 40 years. It's an ongoing, that I have to do this each year, rather than just abate it for a certain time period.
Right. If I could offer, so I met with Carla Miklos, who's the Director of Operation Hope. She has been working on, to purchase these properties for Operation Hope, to add to their affordable housing stock. And so they're working, there's some little blips here and there. But that was always, that whole, that whole, those, those units were always considered affordable units and under the Affordable Housing statute. And she's also working to, with Mark Barnhart, to modify the language for other affordable housing units that Operation Hope owns, to put 40-year deed restrictions, technically make sure that they're all in place on all of her units, because some of them are a little out of whack. But those are, those are affordable units.
So, and I'm just catching up here, so forgive me. How many of these do we have throughout town, these type agreements? Is this the only one of these type situations that we have?
To my knowledge, this is the only one in this particular setup. I believe the assessor would know about other agreements, but they have an end date, right? It's like a 40-year time period.
Uh huh. So in any, is this, please catch me up. In any instance where we have affordable housing under the statute, we're giving some type of abatement and/or reduction of real estate taxes?
It's up to the town to make that decision, whether they want to abate or exempt that property. They, as the assessor, I cannot exempt...
I understand that.
Affordable housing. So if they, if the town wants to do that, it's an option, and...
Right.
They do an ordinance. Now, with MICA Housing and Operation Hope properties, we did an ordinance a year ago.
Okay.
An ordinance allows them to be exempted. And I don't believe you have to come for the abatement request on those. So this is just handled differently. It's done through the abatement process.
Right. So what, what does the agreement that was signed a year or so ago say? That they get free, they don't have to pay taxes on the properties that are affordable housing?
Essentially, they have an exemption for 40 years.
And how many of those properties are there, do we know?
I think there's a half dozen or so.
Yeah. See, I guess, I guess...
Eight, maybe. I don't remember the exact numbers.
Yeah. I guess where I'm going with this, I don't know enough to say I'm ardently opposed to something or in favor of it. Would I, and I, you guys weren't here, and I certainly wasn't here, these one-offs are the things that bother me, right? We should have a policy that says, this is the way we're going to handle this, versus, we're not going to do these items. That way, everybody gets treated fairly, from the developer to the... So...
I think that's why we did what we did with Operation Hope and the MICA.
Which, right. I'd just like to know, does that cover everybody in town? How's that working out? How many properties are part of that? What's the economic impact of that overall, of that? You know, how much are we abating or reducing, right? Because I think...
Yeah. I think, I think we did all that when we came and did it. I have to...
Can we dig it up and see?
I'll have to see if I can find it.
Because I didn't see it at the Board of Finance level, as I recall. And it's interesting, because we spent a lot of time talking about senior and disabled tax relief, and saying, quote-unquote, lack of a better way to say it, how much does that cost the town on an annual basis? But we don't talk about things like this, and I think that would also be good to know. How many properties are we exempting?
If I can dig up on that.
Yeah. And if you come across things that say, we can do things better, and we can do things more consistently, as opposed to one-offs?
Exactly.
I know. You did that last year.
You know, once we had that problem, once the OHA issue popped up, that's how we fixed it. And that's a more permanent orderly solution.
Right. No, I appreciate that. I just want to, can you, can someone forward to me what was agreed to last year on that, so I can see that, please, that ordinance that you're referring to? June of 18? Okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Is there anything else you want to add?
I just also wanted to clarify that. So the taxes that we're abating is 17 grand lists. It covers, as was mentioned, July 1 of 18 through June 30 of 19. So anything going on in the future with these properties, this abatement, it would have no impact, because the time period has already passed.
Correct.
Just, like I said, we're just catching up and abating per the Act of Agreement.
Basically, you're cleaning up an uncollectible receivable.
Correct.
Do you have any questions to ask?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right. So...
Thank you.
Did we, we already seconded this?
Yes.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. David? Okay. Next up is number, before I go to seven, I know we're having a riveting meeting, but anyone who's been, you know, was appointed to a commission, if you, if you have somewhere else to be, feel free. You can, you don't have to stay. You're not, you're not mandated to sit here in this really exciting meeting. Just wanted to give you that free pass, if you want to take it.
I make a motion that we rescind all of their appointment.
Enjoy your evening, and thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
I mean...
I mean, really. They feel like they're stuck here. They'll, they'll thank me later. Number seven is Ross Murray, the tax assessor, to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed contract with municipal valuation services for property valuation services for the October 20 grand list, in the amount not to exceed $253,000. Funding for this agreement is available. And then there's an account number. Would you like to, look, can I have a motion to, to have this before us?
I'll move to have, to hear.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we are here to see if we can finalize our contract for the revaluation for the October 20 grand list. Background on what we've done, we issued an RFP back in June of this year. We had four responses come in in mid to late January. Purchasing Director Gerald Foley and myself interviewed all four of those respondents. And from that group, we had two that we felt were the, our top two choices, and one that was a lead. The, we brought that lead back, since they were local, interviewed them a second time, and with Purchasing Director Bob Mayer with us, and we all agreed that we would select municipal valuations. And Michael Fazio from the managing partner of Municipal Valuations is here. Some of the things that we looked at, we looked at their past revals, we looked at, we checked all their references back to 2015, and essentially had all positive comments. You know, really nothing negative that would stand out. We looked at the, the revales that were scheduled throughout the state in 2020, to look at the volume of each company, to help us make our choice. Right now, Municipal Valuation has Oxford, North Branford and Bridgeport scheduled. That's their only two other towns, North Branford and Bridgeport are the only two other towns they have scheduled. Their load is a little bit lighter this time, parcel count-wise. Cost, they were also the least expensive bidder. Included in the bid for the 253 is taking fresh photos of all the houses from, from the street, which is important for us when we're reviewing, see what the house looked like at that point, you know, close to the revale date. After that second round with, with Bob Mayer, we presented it to Mike Tetro for a select at the time. He had some further questions, so we went back, we got those answered. He was satisfied and signed off on the selection. So we were ready to move forward at that point. But at this time, we were late in October. So with the pending election, we held off. And of course, then we found we would have a change of administration, so we held off a little further. And so now we're here late in mid-December, trying to wrap this up. Our new town attorney, Jim Baldwin, has reviewed the contract, and him and Mike are in agreement. So we are, we are ready to go. Any questions?
I would just say, I would just say that I met with the town attorney, and we also looked it over as well, and the purchasing director. And one of the things the town attorney recommended and agreed with was that each of the people who worked for the company would have background checks. And I was, found out that the company already does that as part of their normal business model. So that's, that's a good thing.
And I have a question, a question and a statement. Can you just state, for the record, because I don't think many residents appreciate that this is something that's mandated by the state, that this is not just something we're engaging in.
Correct. We are, you know, throughout the state, every town has to do a revaluation every five years. And we have to visit every property, or there's other methods, including data mailers, once every 10 years.
Okay.
But this is not a site visit revale, so it is a little less expensive.
And ultimately, it's good to hear that some of the reasoning why. But ultimately, what was, were some of the other standout things that made you come to the conclusion that you did with the particular company that you did?
They're local.
Okay.
They are a Fairfield-based company. Cost is certainly a good, a consideration, but not, never the, for me, the sole consideration. You want, you want a good quality product. Certainly, the recommendations they got from all the other towns, again, it was very positive throughout everyone I've spoke to that had done revals in the past five-plus years. You know, a couple of people had done, had moved towns, so they had done revales prior to 2015. Their commercial expertise, I can probably clarify it better, but they, they kind of started their business before they got into revals of defending values, particularly commercial. So they are, you know, going to be an asset as far as defending commercial appeals in particular, once that, once we get to that point.
And then, it being a local company, do you anticipate, or have you looked into any potential conflicts of interest? In terms of employee, you know?
Yeah. I mean, you know, certainly, they, Mike lives in town. Just...
All three partners live in town, and I did that. We'll let our properties, because we all own a house.
I think you actually technically, sorry, I have to come to the mic, so you can state your name for the record. Sorry.
Michael Fazio, Municipal Valuation Services. So myself and my two partners, we all live in town, and we own a building on Sherman Street. So we decided that we would let the properties fall into the model, and then Ross would review the, the model and the outcome, and make the final decision on our three properties.
And the way the revale works, short and sweet, is we look at all the properties that have sold. And from those sales, we build a model, a pricing model. So once it works for the sold properties, we then apply it to the unsold. So as long as the property is listed properly, and I can, I will certainly review that, it's going to price the way the model produces the number. And commercial properties are handled from, we develop a similar model, but based on income, most likely.
Okay. Got any?
Yeah, I do. First of all, thank you. Second of all, the town attorney has reviewed the contract, and you're all set with the contract.
Yes. So material changes, and that includes, if I may add...
Yeah.
And that's just a back...
Sorry, Jim.
Jim Baldwin, Town Attorney. It includes not just the background checks, but also the conflict of interest language is baked into the, the agreement, so that, that should not happen, according to its terms.
Thanks. I am, first of all, I'm thrilled it's a local company. Second of all, for this particular type of work, being a local company, I think adds to it, because you're familiar with the town, you know the town, you understand the issues regarding the properties around the town. regarding the properties around the town, so I think that's, that can be nothing but a net positive. My, this has been one of the biggest hot-button issues I've had for a number of years, because I believe that this valuation is going to be very different for the town, and I think it's going to be very sensitive and have an economic impact, both positive and negative, much more than spending decreases or increases for the town, right? This is going to be very sensitive, and I don't think it's well-understood. So, the first thing I'd like to say is, we definitely need an increased communications plan regarding the valuation. From your office, what does evaluation mean? How does the pie get cut up? How does that work, right? We're needing to educate the town, because the last time we had this issue, and I'll look at Mr. Mayor, who's here along with me, holding office, there was a lot of consternation, a lot of angst among town people, and a lot of appeals because of everything that was going on around town. So, I want to be proactive on that and make sure that that's part of the plan. The, I was shocked at the price point of this, because I believe last time we did this, it was over $500,000, and this is coming in at $260,000 or so, which tells me that the approach must be radically different. I think we funded it over two years last time, and I think that was the time period we needed to look at every house, visit every house, versus this one is a bit less than that, which is why it's half the cost, correct?
Correct. Right, there's no site visits.
There's no site visits.
Just on the sold.
Right. Which gets me to my only issue with this, okay, is if you go to our town charter, under 8.3, Board of Finance responsibilities, a letter D, if I might, I just have to read this, is the assessment system. And the Board of Finance by our charter shall install and shall modernize from time to time a system by which equitable and just values of taxable property within the town may be ascertained. The system shall provide, among other things, for the collection of data relating to each parcel of land and to each building within the town, and for the arrangement of such data in a convenient and practical form for the use of the assessor. The system may be provided, may provide for the preparation and upkeep of tax maps and land maps in the discretion of the Board of Finance. So, this body has the responsibility to approve contracts, but I don't believe the approach and how this is being managed going forward has gone yet before the Board of Finance. And I think, you know, it would be appropriate for the Board of Finance to weigh in, given the critical nature of this, on how we're managing this, given what's in the charter. So, I would say, you know, I can approve the contract, I'm comfortable with the legal language, I'm comfortable with the price point, I like the company, but I do believe the Board of Finance has a role to play here to review and be comfortable with how we're going forward politically, especially with something that's going to be so politically sensitive and so sensitive overall.
The town attorney should speak to this.
I will give it my immediate attention and get an answer to you as to whether or not I agree with that opinion. This is the first time it's been raised, and of course, when the bids went out for the RFP, for all this, and came back, it's a prior period of time. So, I will give it my immediate attention and let you know, let the board know.
If we were to do this, I think, thank you, Mr. Baldwin, that's exactly right, and this probably actually should have gone before the Board of Finance during the fall, right?
Possibly.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. At least as a, if not legally required, at least based on this, they do have a role to play. What I want to ask you is, there's language in here that says you would be getting underway on January 2 to start this work. If this had to go before the Board of Finance for just an update that you guys could come in and say what you were going to do, they have an early January meeting, which is likely the 7th or something of that sort, probably the 7th. Right, Mr. Mayor? Could they look at this on the 7th, and you could get started, and what would that do?
Maybe there's a, let me just clarify. Municipal valuations is not providing any software.
I'm not saying it is, I'm reading as.
If they're, if the Board of Finance is responsible for the software that we use, and that's.
I don't believe it's, yeah, I don't believe this is referring to software. This is the assessment system, this is how is the assessment managed.
Yeah, that's.
If I may, the mitigation to this is, when this was presented in the budget, because there's money in the budget for this year, money, but when it was presented in the budget, there was a discussion that this would be a partial revale and the approach. So, there was, there were discussions, it's not an avoid.
Right. I understand.
You would certainly bring it to her.
And I think there was also discussion of bringing it back before the Board of Finance and having a discussion about it at that time, too.
Yeah, we can definitely put something together.
Right. We're talking a period of five days to allow them to just be comfortable with the process.
And we haven't changed our CAMA system. Can you use the microphone, please?
I.
We haven't changed our CAMA system. I think we went on to the, it's a vision appraisal that provides this, that's been the same.
Yeah, you're taking a very narrow reading of system.
Okay.
When I read a system here, I don't read software. I read a system here of the management of the values, right?
Can I ask a question? Does, in our prior revaluations, did the Board of Finance have to review?
Yes, we did. We didn't review contracts, we reviewed and had presentations on the approach. The contract clearly.
The contract was approved?
No.
Is there precedent to say that in good faith, we can proceed in the interest of not holding up the process another few weeks, so that we don't have to, so that failing any gross.
Correct. We approved.
Findings by the Board of Finance, if that's what our town attorney finds, but in good faith, could we perhaps consider proceeding and then, subject to any changes that might occur?
I know, again, baked into the contract of terms that concern the lack of funding, so this is being funded in two phases, for this fiscal year and for the next, so that would certainly be an opportunity to stop things then, because the contract allows for it.
I believe we already approved, and the Board of Finance, the entire funding of the 250 this year, even though it'll take part over time, so they don't have to come back to the Board of Finance for additional funding. I think, I would be comfortable approving this, to your point, subject to the Board of Finance reviewing this at their January meeting. And therefore, it does not have to come back here, because I don't view this as a contract issue. I view this as, I just want them comfortable with the approach based on what's in the charter. That's all I'm saying. Yeah.
Flynn, this is the first time that this has been raised and brought to my attention, or anyone's attention, to my knowledge, it's been involved in this since the new administrations come in, and I'm not sure, I haven't dived into the charter language that you have, I just heard it, and it is not something which I've concluded yet, whether or not I agree with you, so to make this approval contingent upon that, maybe you need to have a contingency that that's if the town attorney's opinion is in concert with yours. Just a suggestion.
I would prefer that.
I, okay, and the reason I didn't raise it before, I just got this. I just got the actual documents yesterday. So, it's the first time, I actually did not know it was on the agenda for the valuation, I was waiting for it, I figured it would come after it went to the Board of Finance, so that's, that's why I'm not trying to play a game of gotcha here. And again, I am comfortable with the contract, particularly since you reviewed it, I'm comfortable with the company that's doing the work, my concern is just the process. That's it.
Maybe Ross can address for you the timing that's involved in this, and we have to have it done by a certain date, is that right?
Well, it has to be, you know, we're targeting, it has to be completed by January 31 of 21, so we have to back up the work from there.
Right. And that's what I was asking, what does a potential day of delay of a few days do to that? Assuming this gets approved by them, which we got bigger issues if it doesn't.
Or by you.
Right. Right.
We could, we could handle a week.
So, I'm going to ask the town attorney what he would recommend we do.
I think he recommended it, right. So, let me do it. I'll make a motion that we amend item number seven, to say that to hear, consider, and authorize the purchasing authority, excuse me, to enter into the proposed contract with municipal valuation services for property valuation services for the October 2020 grand list in the amount not to exceed $253,000, subject to review by the Board of Finance at its January meeting, and subject to the town attorney's interpretation of the statute of the article in the charter, town charter. Funding for this agreement to be available in account 0100-3050-53200.
Can we have discussion on that motion?
You need to second it first.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay.
Now, can I discuss it?
Absolutely.
Okay. That language, since it is official, I just want to be clear, because it's not both, and it sounds like, from the way you just said it, unless I'm misunderstanding, that it's really only if our town attorney feels that that's the right step to go to the Board of Finance, it's not both. So, if the town attorney finds that it's not necessary per our charter, then that's a redundant step. So, I just want to be clear that the first process has to be the town attorney making a decision that in fact, it needs to, so.
So, I'll amend my, I'll amend my item to say that, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll say the 2020 grand list in the amount not to exceed $253,000, subject to review by the town attorney, and perhaps subsequent review by the Board of Finance, if the town attorney deems necessary.
I'll second it with further discussion, because again, I think that's redundant, because if it's in the charter, then that, by virtue of the charter, it would have to happen, so is it important to put it?
Yes, I think so.
Amendment?
I believe it is.
Mr. Baldwin?
I'll just stay up here. One of my responsibilities as town attorney is to interpret the charter and to give boards and commissions, you know, my opinion as to what it says and what it mandates, not what I think it says, or what I want it to say, rather, but what it does say, and so that is what Flynn is talking about.
Right, so thus, if your finding is that in fact, it needs to go before the Board of Finance, isn't that then presumed? So, I'm just saying, isn't that second language?
Well, then, it shall go before the Board of Finance.
Okay.
Right.
And for their consideration.
Per your determination.
Yeah, if that's the conclusion that I reach.
So, do you want to read your second amendment, then, Mr. Flynn, and then we can?
I would reread it if I wrote it down. The October 2020 grand list in the amount not to exceed $253,000, subject to review of the town attorney, and perhaps required review by the Board of Finance, based on the town attorney's opinion.
So, I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Good luck.
Did you vote on the contracts?
The amendment, no.
We voted on the amendment.
Thank you.
Good, Mr. Mayor.
So, vote on the item as amended.
Okay, so now, the main motion as amended is on, and Drew, did you get the word, the language on that amendment?
I have, I'm recording it.
Oh, okay, very good.
And I did write down as much as I could, but that's.
So, the motion as amended, can I get a motion for the item as amended?
I will move to hear, consider the motion as amended and recorded.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number eight. To hear and consider and approve an agreement between the town.
Am I on, oh. To hear and consider and approve an agreement between the town of Fairfield and Yale University for the purposes of authorizing Yale Occupational Environmental Medicine Program to evaluate the risks and exposures of DPW employees related to the construction material, processing facility, and the use of material from the facility in various town properties and projects. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to.
I'll second.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, thank you. Hello again, Jim Baldwin, Town Attorney. So, this is an agreement with Yale Occupational Medicine, which is headed by Dr. Kerry Redler at Yale, for the purpose, so stated by the first selectwoman, it is intended to, I think, allay hopefully the fears and angst experienced by many people in this town, but in particular, employees at the DPW who have worked at or near and around the fill pile and its contents distributed throughout, whatever. So, it's a very comprehensive review, it's one which is going to afford the employees' interaction with Yale Occupational Medicine and interviews, and if they have any and all questions, they will be answered, they will be looked into. The outline, I think, is pretty comprehensive. It's going to result in a written summary of the findings and recommendations, and then those findings and recommendations will be shared with the DPW workers, and that will be en masse, and also one-on-one, should anyone want to do that. It's, there's a maximum price of $12,000 here, with an additional cost estimated at $4,000 for their costs, and it will hopefully be conducted and completed by the end of next month. I think it's the right thing to do, I can explain the workers' compensation system, and why it's important, but that system is designed to protect workers.
Yes.
And it's not a litigious system, it's not designed to be litigious, it's designed to care for the safety, health, and welfare of workers, and that's what we're doing here, I think.
And thank you, I appreciate you bringing this forward for us to review and have be on the agenda, and I 100% support it, and I think it's a good thing for our employees who are concerned about their health, and I think it's a valuable thing that we were afforded to have, so I'm grateful that we're getting this. So, thank you.
I agree with that, and I also just have a question, what does it look like in practical terms for an employee? How will this, in practice, what does it look like for an employee?
It being the interview system.
Interviews and.
It's going to be an interview and a site.
Workday, I mean, literally.
It's, the details are left with Dr. Redler and her team, but we did have a lengthy phone discussion about what is involved, because I questioned whether a site visit was even necessary. Don't you just need the test results and know what the contaminants are, and can't you just do testing of the employees who want to be tested for the purpose of finding a baseline? And it was explained in very clear terms to me by Dr. Redlich that more is necessary, and part of this is also, as I said earlier, is to explain to the employees the risk, or hopefully the lack thereof, of what's found, so, but we don't know that until the summary report is generated. In order to generate the summary report, they're going to do a deep dive into all the test results, and also figure out where these things were, and interview certain employees to figure that out, and then do the research, and then compile their summary report.
And I'm sorry if this is clear, but by test reports, you mean the soil samples, or do you mean blood tests from employees?
No, that's a good question. That was my initial impression, was it maybe just take a test, and the fact is, there are no easy tests for such things. The only thing that there is an easy test for that has known baseline statistics is lead, according to Dr. Redlich, so it requires more than that.
I agree with Mike. I agree with my colleagues regarding what we need to do to protect our employees, given the situation and all that. When I read this, fine, the $12,000 needs to be spent, fine, we need to get baseline, fine, they need to be tested, it all makes sense to me. My, where I went after that is what's next? What does day two look like? What does medical monitoring look like? Is there an ongoing expense here related to this, to medical monitoring? And what if things, God forbid, are found? So can you step us through, you know, what this looks like for the next number of years?
I can only give you possibilities.
And that's what I want, because I just want to know what we're getting ourselves into here.
So it depends, again, on what that summary report concludes.
Right.
And I am not an expert in the field, so Dr. Redlich will be able to provide that information. I can give you a spectrum of possibilities. You could have the absolute worst scenario, which is not anticipated, but it's possible, right? That there should be annual testing of employees, for example, or something to that effect.
Right. Do we know what that costs, Jim, or anything like that?
Again, that would be contained in the summary report. This is the tip of the iceberg, and I can't tell you what's below the surface of this thing, other than there's a possibility that it doesn't go very deep, or that there's more to it, and so-
So when they, I read in here that they were going to do testing, right? One of the first things is more testing to see what's there. Are they going to rely on the testing that's already been done and what deep is doing down at the pile? Or is there going to be more?
I don't believe they're going to be doing any more, they won't be doing more testing.
They won't be?
No, they are going to review the tests that have already been performed, and there's additional testing and additional test results, which we're waiting to get back from the DEEP, which may be what you're referring to. But I asked that question as well. I thought that any testing would be redundant, and I was assured, I was assured that that was not the case. Because I was concerned about this being bigger than it was needed, than what was necessary. But I was convinced, based on our conversation with the doctor, that it is absolutely appropriate to move forward in this manner.
Right. And again, I'm not against the issue, I'm just trying to say, what are we, once you, I think you put it quite well, this is the tip, right? We don't know what's below the surface, but whatever's below the surface, we've signed up for once we do this.
No, that's not correct.
Okay, so-
No, we will get the summary report, and then the recommendations will be made, and then the town will be faced with whether or not they want to implement those recommendations.
Right.
Whatever they may be.
Do we, do we know what our insurance policies cover relative to any next steps on this? Has risk management been involved at all?
Yeah, it would be under the workers' compensation system, and I think that that's a $100,000 or $500,000, I'm not sure which, but one of those is we're essentially self-insured up to that, and then there's excess insurance per employee. And actually, what this does is, this is why the workers' comp system works well, because if you treat people early, then-
Right.
-further problems and issues may be avoided.
Right.
So that's the importance of confronting this now and taking care of it now, so that everybody knows and is made aware.
Yeah, and again, I'm not, I'm not voting against it. I think we owe it to the employees to do it, right? I just want to, I just want to make sure I put it into the context of what this all means going forward.
As a risk management perspective, it makes abundant sense to do this.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So I can make the motion?
Absolutely, thank you.
I will move to move the agreement between the town of Fairfield and Yale University.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Next item is number nine, to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting dates for calendar year 2020, the first and third Monday of each month at 4:00 PM. And the dates we have listed, but we have an, do you want to make your amendment first?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move the June 15th date to June 22nd, and that's because of a conflict I have in my schedule. I understand it works for both of your schedules, so I'd like to move to move June 15th to June 22nd.
I will second that amendment.
Thank you.
So the dates are January 6th. Oh, all in favor of the amendment? I-
Aye.
The dates are January 6th and 21st, February 3rd and February 10th, March 2nd, 16th, July 6th, oh, I'm sorry, April 6th and 27th, May 4th and 18th, June 1st and the 22nd, July 6th, my dad's birthday, and the 20th, August 3rd and the 17th, September 14th and the 21st, October 5th and the 19th, November 2nd and the 16th, November 7th and the 22nd.
21st.
21st. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it-
On the amended?
I'll move it as amended.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And item number 10, to approve budget meeting dates to calendar year 2020, for calendar year 2020. And I'm hoping this is a misprint because it's saying that we're meeting from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, or we can just meet anytime in between those.
No, those are actually, yeah, last year, so this is a department-by-department flip of the budget process, and this actually, it can take that long if the questions go through it, to be candid. So they did spend at least a day, I believe, last year doing this, going through the-
A day or three days?
Well, this is, this is two days, with the third day is actually just in, if needed, it's an event of snow. So it's really, you're talking about March 2nd, March 3rd. And it is, if you think about it, the Board of Finance regularly meets for six nights, three to five hours each night. So saying that we're going to get through this, you know, we have less members, so there'll be less questions, but it's not inconceivable that these could be long meetings, just to be honest.
No, just curious.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's why we ran for the Board of Selectmen and not the Board of Finance.
Come on, come on.
Because we like short meetings.
The, can I ask one question here?
Of course.
I do notice that the vote is on that Wednesday, the 11th, which I was curious, I'd love to do that on the 10th if we could, but I don't know whether that's, I wanted to talk to each of you about it and see whether there was a specific reason why it was, there was that drop-in day, the extra day there.
Where are you looking?
It's March 9th and March 11th. Yeah, I would prefer to do it on the 10th if we could, but I'm just, I'll make it work if it has to be the 11th.
Right, I'm just wondering why we're not, to be honest, I'm wondering why we're not just voting after our final deliberations on Monday, the 9th.
Right. So can we, can we move this to the 10th, and we can always cancel that and vote on the 9th if we, if the budget process goes smoothly and the three of us agree? Does anybody have a problem with that?
Could I ask you if there's any conflict in this with the Board of Finance meetings or any of that?
They don't get this until after we vote on it.
I'm aware, I think it's just a matter of your schedules.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So are you suggesting that we would-
So-
-vote on Monday after our final deliberations, and if not, hold Tuesday open?
Yes, what, yes, exactly right.
Because it would make sense, because then we can get, you know, other work done on the other days.
That's correct. That, you've said it very well, Madam First Selectwoman.
So the motion is to move it to the 9th after final deliberations?
So-
Is the motion, or are you, the discussion before us to move it to the 9th after final deliberations, or on Tuesday, the 10th?
Well, how about we make a motion to hold the vote, have a vote on the 9th after final deliberations and-
Keep open.
Keep open Tuesday.
The 10th.
For the potential. But I can't see why we wouldn't be able to vote on the 9th, it would make sense.
I would second that motion.
Okay. I mean, who wants to make it?
You can make it.
Am I allowed to make it?
Yes.
Well, I just made it. Okay. So we're going to say the 9th vote and Tuesday potentially open.
And I'm in favor, so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Motion carries. And I, is the tax assessor, did he leave? Do we know?
The tax collector?
Tax collector.
He got out of Dodge.
Because we do have an item, but maybe he didn't see the page, maybe he didn't, I mean-
Can I, one item on the, on the, on the calendar, just for your consideration, is every quarter, the Board of Finance holds a quarterly update meeting where they review town spending as compared to budget. They do it on the town side, they do it on the Board of Ed's side, and they actually review the pensions. Now, you're going to sit on the pension boards, Madam First Selectwoman. Right, but Nancy and I don't. It might be good if we want to consider asking if the Board of Finance would make those joint meetings, just for your consideration. We're ex officio, so we can go anyway.
Right, I mean, I would personally would prefer, if you could, either one of you, because they are doing the reviews of the various financial institutions, because we had a very long meeting, I believe it was last week, in the second floor conference room. So I think it would be, I mean, obviously, either one of you could sit in on those meetings, or you could attend the pension board meetings, which I think just would be, it's easier than making, you know, a formal-
Oh, I wasn't talking about the pension board meetings, I was actually talking about the quarterly financial reviews done by the Board of Finance.
Right, and you could attend those.
Correct.
Right?
I'm just bringing them to your attention and saying we can make them joint if you'd like.
Okay, I will think about that. Okay, we don't have the tax collector, he's not here.
I make a motion that we move this item to the-
Sorry, I'm just looking at language here, and it says Board of Selectmen Public Executive Session, but executive session-
That's after.
Right, but executive session is a private meeting, so I don't know what the public-
No, what that means is that the, thank you for that, the public executive sessions mean there will be no public comment. Other public meetings, there can be public comment at these meetings, so we wouldn't take public comment, but all the discussion that we would have would be in public.
So it's not an executive session per se, it's just that it's a public session without public comment?
Yeah, which I think they, I've always been told, and I never looked it up, that that is, the definition of that is that the public can't speak.
Got it.
Tax collector is gone?
Oh, there he is.
Oh, you're going to do it? Oh, you're the tax collector now? Okay.
Yeah, basically, that's, people have overpaid their taxes, refunds due, it says no signature required, it's just a matter of, you guys need to vote to, and there's-
And for the record, one of us has to say that we did this last time, that we've read the amount, it's correct.
Right, so just bring it up formally, formally, to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of, it's $12,177.85. Somebody wants to make a motion?
I can move, I've read it, it's here.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is-
This is for you to take?
Yep.
The next item is to enter into private executive session, which I will then make a motion to go into private executive session.
I'll second that.
In favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Come out of executive session and back into public session.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are on item, sorry, item number 12. I'm going to make a motion to proceed with the recommendation of the Town Council on the item of Padilla versus the Town of Fairfield.
I'll second it.
Am I in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And- Okay, and then item number 13 is to hear and consider and act upon any other business which shall properly come before this meeting. Hearing not. Motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy holidays, everybody. Hey, that's a quick meeting. Happy holidays.